All right, good evening. It is 7:05 and I am resuming the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. Tonight our meeting started at six. We had a student recognition for Michaela Hartman who received an award from the NCWIT. And then we had a presentation from our supermarket superintendent search firm, Nesdeck. Now I will open the floor to public comment. We don't have a lot of guests here this evening. So I will close public comment and with the board's permission, we'll move into the agenda. But I'd like to modify. We have Chris Cooney here from the IT department of the schools to talk about the district and school websites. I'd like for him to do that now if that's all right with you guys. Chris, please proceed. Jason is also here, Jason Carey, the IT director. And Chris, I think you're-
This is a need out, so just ignore his, yeah, just pay no attention. All right. Hi, so we talked earlier, much, much earlier, about the need for a new website. The current website for the school has served its purpose and still does, still pretty good. But it's no longer ADA compliant. So we were confronted with the struggle of, okay, we need to either make our current site ADA compliant or we need to move on to a new platform. Then some research found that there was no way to make the existing platform ADA compliant. And plus, there was a desire to move on to a more professional looking website. Our contemporaries in the region all have nicer looking websites. Some of them, like Ethic for example, using sites like Campus Suite, which is what we ended up going with. So this is a new solution. It's hosted and supported by this company Campus Suite, which is much different than how our present solution is, which is through Google Sites, which is not supported really through Google. You can call them, but good luck getting them to fix anything. And it's something that we kind of manage completely in-house. This is more of a collaborative effort where a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of the design and the overall look and feel of it is based off of architecture created by Campus Suite. We manage the content. And by we, I mean- So I've been working for a few months now to get this up and running. We're pretty close. I want to say we're probably about eighty percent way done in terms of being ready to launch. The site is live technically. You can, you and anyone else can go to it. It's at staging.nu-market.k12.nh.us. If you go there, you'll be taken straight to the site as it is. It's navigable. It's got some content on it, some that I added today. For example, this upfront picture here with of the school. I just happen to have this. I'm gonna try to get some higher def pictures and things like that. I think I might have to end up taking them myself. But we're gonna build a nice little gallery of pictures to make it look nice and vibrant. As you can already tell, I mean, the front page of the site is much more colorful. It has a much more modern style to it. It's minimalist. All the important bins jump out. Like if you go over to your schools, it pops out with two pictures of the of the schools. It's very nice. So we've, I figured it was a good time to stop by and sort of announce that the site's pretty much ready to go. The way we're gonna handle the deployment is at a designated time, we're gonna work with the NHDOIT to update our URLs so that they will go to the new site instead of the old site. The old site will still exist. We're going to give it a new URL that we're going to hide just for internal purposes only. It's not intended for public consumption because it is ADA non-compliant. So it can't really be used legally, but we can still use it in-house as like an information resource and to go back and get archived data that we still need. So it's still gonna be there. The new site will have all of its URLs changed from the old site. So NES.nu-market, NJSHS.nu-market, just the regular www.nu-market will all go back to the site. And we'll go back to the appropriate site. So NES.nu-market will go to the NES page. And as you, hold on, let me see here. Why am I looking at that one? I can just look at this one. When you go to the elementary school, you'll notice that it kind, it looks very similar. This, by the way, this thing not loading is a bug that I've been working on the other day. So, there we go. All right, so as you can see, it's got the same exact sort of structure, look and feel and theme, but the content is gonna be different. So both sites for the schools and the site for the SAU are going to look different and have different content. But the structure is gonna be the same. So users who move from site to site are gonna remain familiar with how it's built and how it's navigated, which should make things a lot easier because the way we have it now, it does look very similar. But those are all completely separate sites that can be modified independent of each other. With this, if I update any part of this theme, it pushes down to the entire rest of the site. Just makes it a lot slicker and cleaner. So are there, first off, just before I get into any details that might be interesting, are there any questions about the site?
First, I want to say how amazing it looks. It's a whole, you've taken us to a whole different stratosphere of technology, so thank you for that.
Wish I could take full credit, but this, a lot of this was Campus Suite's work. They do good work.
Well, I'm gonna give the recognition to you. My next question is, in terms of ADA features, can you show us some of those things? Like things that magnify or is that not, am I asking something that's not?
Okay, so a lot of the ADA compliance is sort of, it doesn't play super well to a crowd because a lot of it is baked into the architecture of the site.
Ah, okay.
So people with visual impairments, the way they access websites is they use screen reader programs that basically read the website to them. Those programs read the website's code to to do that. And the website has to be coded specifically to kind of cater to those or make itself available to those. Also, there's smaller things like the way the font choices and text colors and things like that are engineered specifically to work with people who can't see things based off of what kind of contrast, people of colorblindness, stuff like that. It's, so there's subtle aspects to it there. There's also architecture built in for things like images. So for example, this image here, if a screen reader program, while it's reading the website, gets to this, it'll read the alt text of this image, which I have typed in to say, "school lunch on table napkin" or whatever, right?
Oh neat, okay.
So it's, a lot of it is built into the architecture. Now in terms of zoom options, thing like that, not available yet. But we did check, or at least I checked with as much as I could, and those aren't necessarily hard and fast. We don't really get dinged on those too much. What what really gets you in ADA is alt text for images because some, I'm sure you've seen pictures of of prose or or text. So like, for example, the special ed department has a picture that's a poem. Right, well, if you're rea, if you're using screen reader, it'll get the same picture here and that'll be it. So you actually have to write the entire text and stuff like that. So that's stuff we weren't doing then, we are. There's also features in for videos and things like that where videos have to be narrated if if it's not spoken word or closed captioned. It, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot that people don't usually think about or we haven't been thinking about, now we have to. So having this solution is gonna make it a lot easier to manage that, to keep us safe from litigation.
And allow people to access the website that might need to?
Yes, it is much more accessible. I mean, we, in our previous site, we did have an accessibility form that people could fill out if they were running into any trouble. We did get a few responses. We did get a lot of spam, but we did get a few responses from people who said they were having accessibility issues. Hopefully, the new site will help with that a little bit. Also, it, the, this site is built into the architecture of the site. This is another reason why you go with a hosted solution instead of one that is of one that you pay for versus one that you don't, is it's set up so that it reads well on mobile. So if you are looking at it on a pad or a phone, it automatically resizes itself and makes it accessible on mobile.
Nice.
Great.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of good stuff going on here. So I wanted to make the announcement and say, it's pretty much ready to go. I'm, I wanted to sort of get the okay from the board before I start talking to the DOIT to start putting into motion updating the URLs and then we'll just go live with it. So overnight, people's URL, when they click on their bookmark to go, 'cause I know everyone's got a bookmark, when they click on their bookmark to go to the site to check in the morning, they'll go to this instead of the old one.
What's the DDOIT?
Just to be clear, the DOIT is the Department of Information Technology.
New Hampshire Department of Information Technology.
They own newmarket.k12nh.us.
So we have to go through them if we want to update addressing and things like that. Our emails, for example, you know, that's, the URL is through them. So we kind of gotta go through them for all that stuff.
Chris, I know we say this to Jason a lot, but we, and you are not here as often. So I just want to thank you for all the work that you guys do to keep us moving in the IT department throughout the whole district. We appreciate all the hard work that both of you do.
Yeah, thank you.
And it means a lot.
Packaged in with this, by the way, do you want me to talk about the alert system? Is it a little too real?
Yes, please.
Okay, so packaged in with this. So this isn't just a website. Campus Suite is sort of a full content management system and we also invested in their alert system. So right now, we're using Blackboard Connect for our alerts. That's for when you get text messages and robocalls.
And will through this winter.
And will through this winter. This is not something that we're, I mean, once this goes live and we can finally say, okay, this is pretty much now in maintenance mode, then we move on to getting the alerts up. We, but it's, that's next on the project list. But it comes packaged with an alert system that's fully realized. So we're going to move out of this Blackboard Connect and start adopting Campus Suite. The advantage to that is because the alert system and the website are both managed by the same company, it's baked into the code. So if we do an alert, for example, hey, there's a school closing, all the person needs to do is activate the alert, the texts go out, the phones go up, and the website updates automatically. And it'll have a pop-up. It'll go to the website and it'll pop and it'll say, "school's closed." Click here for more details. Then it'll direct you to the page that we have set up for school closings and the list. So it's a, it's sort of an all-in-one system and the the price point rounded out to, we're not spending any extra money. So we're getting a website, we're keeping an alert system for no extra cost.
Okay.
It was about half of what we were paying for Blackboard Connect.
Oh, great.
Pretty good savings.
Yes. Yeah, it's a great system. And just having worked with this company for years, or two years, ah, months, they have a really good support team. I was here the day after Christmas working on the site and I had a small problem. So they've got a little chatbot that you can click and it came up and I just sent the message expecting nothing to come back. Maybe I get back to me immediately. So they're attentive and very professional and nothing but good things to say about them so far. I have sent an email, I think it was just to you.
It was, and I'm really rising right now that I never passed it along to anyone and didn't fulfill. So yes, you did, Chris.
You guys are gonna have a page. At the moment, the school board page is thrifty. It is a single low image, low resolution picture about yay big where you can't make out any faces. And it just says, "the school board is awesome and, you know, really strives for education excellence." And that's about it. What I would love to have is sort of profiles for every person in the school board and contact details for anybody who wants that information public. Paragraph. Doesn't have to be very much. It's all gonna be in one single page. Also, any action items that the school board is interested in or committed to, that wants to be able to communicate to the public. You you guys can have as vibrant a page as you want. It's easy to set up. And if you, you all have New Market email accounts, so I can get you set up with logins and if you want to edit the site yourselves. So that's definitely a conversation I want to have. Not necessarily, it wasn't on the critical path, to use corporate speak.
Good thing, 'cause I dropped a ball on the critical path.
It wasn't on the critical path, so I sort of, I sort of just let it go. But once we go live and then we start moving into sort of maintenance mode, it's definitely gonna be something I'm gonna come back to and say like, hey, let's get to work on.
Maybe we could do it during a retreat. We could have you show up and we could just like tell you what we want and do pictures and do that kind of thing.
I'm happy to. I mean, yeah, my 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 title is Website Manager, Webmaster.
Webmaster.
Different than Website Manager. And I'm happy to take on a hundred percent responsibility. I'm happy also to delegate to other people as well, but it's 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 up, it's up to really how much you want to be involved in it. If you would really prefer just to send me the content, I posted it back.
Perfect.
Yeah, works for me.
Any other questions for Chris?
No, thank you.
Great.
So yeah, if anyone has any concerns, I'll start, I'll get to work with the NHDOIT and get the URL set up. And we'll go live with this probably sometime next week.
Oh, exciting.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're running on the coast, so. All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you. Looks great. All right, moving on to the agenda. We are in the reports section. The first report is the superintendent report. Meredith, if you'd like to give us your report?
Sure. First, just again, compliments to Chris. He's worked very hard on this project over the last several months, sort of getting the school year up and running first. But then he's, he's been working on this pretty solidly over over recent weeks. And a lot of the content acquisition has been pulley teeth. So you're not the only one who was difficult to get information from, but I appreciate his persistence and I think he's providing you with a great product moving forward. We have an emergency management drill with the Department of Homeland Security next week. And town officials will be joining us for that, so we're looking forward to that, the tabletop drills. So it's not, doesn't involve students. It's a practice opportunity for our teams. We are also offering in conjunction with the University of New Hampshire some diversity training for staff coming up in the next couple of weeks. We are already working on our summer planning, summer school, and facilities use positions, as well as some professional development for this coming summer to include competency-based education training in partnership with some other districts in the area.
Thank you, guys.
Caitlin's not here. I do know that our boys basketball team won their holiday tournament, so congratulations to them. And I know the middle school boys won their game yesterday. The girls lost, but the girls won today. And I don't know the outcome of the boys' game because it was still ongoing. What else do I have to offer for them? I did include in your packet memo from your faculty director regarding the sign.
Yes.
From your senior high. So probably a critical part is paragraph four. Town zoning would preclude any business from obtaining a permit for this type of signage, but municipality is exempted from their own articles and ordinances under state of New Hampshire rules. The town administrator was asked for his review on the exemption. His opinion was that the school district was exempted from the zoning requirements, but it would be up to the school board to review. So this was the donation that we received from a community member in the fall. It included donations for the weight room, athletic sign for the gymnasium, but a sign. This is a LED sign to be placed in front of the junior, senior high school, similar to the one that is at Cobran Academy, if people are familiar with that in Northwood. So the board will need to make a decision on whether or not it wants to proceed with that.
Do we need to ask the DOT for permission?
We do not. It is not on the road. It is within the setback allowance. Thank you for asking that because we would need to start two years earlier in order to do that.
Yeah, but it brings up a fair point, though, just aside from DOT about just just placement of a thing. Because it is, you know, people are gonna be looking at it.
Right, I mean, that is a high-traffic area.
Yeah, where you wanna put it relative to where people might be crossing and all that. Is that something we should consider?
Should we move on it tonight, or?
Um, I would be prepared to do that. I'm not sure.
I'd like to know a little bit more about it, frankly, like what's being proposed, where it might be placed, how it might function. Is it remote? Is it, you know, you know, have we, have we considered where it's gonna go?
Yeah, I mean, I think the board approved that general concept of information and the specs were included a couple months ago when the donation was received from the community member. But we can bring that back to you and help you in it.
And it was helpful for me, having been past Cobran, to see what the sign looked like. Because I didn't ha, have a sense of what it looked like. And theirs is actually a nice-looking sign. Like it has a nice wooden-
Yeah, it's LED, so it's computer-controlled from wherever it's of, it's appropriate.
Is it up on the, is it going east? Is it up on the hillside there?
Yes.
Yep, that's what I thought.
Yeah, lots of schools have them.
Yeah, it's just, it's up on the hill because of the way the the landscape is there.
Let's start off before you, we have some donations to acknowledge. A couple you have to approve later on, but we received a donation from Link Orthodontics to the New Market Robotics Program, the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. So we appreciate that very much. The team is working hard to fulfill its fundraising goals to cover some of their expenses, but we do offset that with the district. It is an expensive program to support. I also want to thank the Governor Wentworth School District for their donation of some large chest coolers. They were recommended to us by Sherri White at the Department of Education, who works in the Food Services Department, as a school district who had gone through a similar challenge with food service transportation. We are currently transporting food from the junior, senior high. That information went out to families prior to vacation. The menu is posted and and subject to change, but the menu is posted online. You know, I can't say that it isn't challenging to prepare twice the number of meals in half the number of kitchens. But but our food service staff is rising to the challenge and we appreciate their, their good efforts on that front. Our serving line at the elementary school was finalized over vacation and demolition of the existing kitchen is slated to begin next week. But again, we expect to have that that completed sometime in April, likely occupying that after April vacation.
Any committee reports from any school board members?
Just from SST, a month or so ago, I commented that we'd be looking at the the charges for special ed students. That is all being rolled into the review of the twenty-year agreement that all of the cooperating schools do. And so that will be part of that review when that comes out and since it's been twenty years, I guess, since that was rewritten. It's gonna be a big, a big one when it comes through.
And then Monday, the seventh, we have the public hearing for the school for the budget committee.
No, Monday, the fourteenth is the public hearing. Monday, the seventh is the budget committee's regular meeting.
Correct.
To vote on the school district budget. And what was for the public hearing?
Say again, what the fourteenth is?
The fourteenth is the public hearing, both the school board public hearing and the school and the budget committee public hearing on the school district budget.
I totally had those dates wrong.
If I gave them to you.
Both at seven?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other committee reports?
Okay, no, I have it at six, but that doesn't mean anything. I have the fourteenth at seven and the seventh at six, but I will find out for you definitely and let you know.
Please let us know. Kim, nothing further of facilities other than what Meredith just mentioned? Okay, um. Elizabeth, I'm gonna ask you to take over the meeting for a moment. I need to go see what's going on.
Okay. So we can go over the school board calendar, which we just started. Again, seven o'clock's the budget public hearing. No.
It's not the public hearing.
No, it's just the budget hearing and then the fourteenth will be the public hearing. Final post-day for the budget. Is it correct? Okay, thank you. Then we have our normal, we're back down to normal meetings every other. Seventh and February twenty-first. What's next?
Next building committee meeting's on the fifteenth.
Okay. We can start looking at policies. So we did go over, we'll go over the first readings of the, of the administrated.
Got a list of them.
Yeah. Did anybody have any questions over the first readings of administration?
Let's see here. Yes, on DDAA, it was just, I think it may be an editing error. There was a, or on page seven, number nine.
DDAA?
DDAA, page seven, number nine. The old English teacher in me says, double negatives?
No event not later than ten days. It's actually okay.
Is it? Okay. I was looking at, I'm going.
It is awkward. It's written by lawyers, but it is sprawl.
There were a couple of things I was like, ah, I had my dictionary sitting next to me saying, is this legalese or is this, huh, um? But then on the school board agenda, there was a comment, a public comment that was a strike, and it looks as if it's an unfinished sentence.
Same policy.
No, no, a different one, a school board agenda.
So that's the second read?
Probably, yep.
If we can come back to that one.
We can come back to that one, yep.
Yeah, just add, these are, these are your administration policies. And these are in the beginning of your financial policies, the policies we will be looking at. The remainder of your Ds along with your Fs tomorrow, which are facilities. And we'll have another, another section for you to review in February.
One of the questions, Meredith, that came up earlier was how these changes were made. And I said, whether they were school board association changes or committee decision changes. And I said that, you know, it was sort of a combination of those things. There were times when we simply replaced our existing policy with the school board association suggestion. There were times when maybe we needed to modify or amend our current policy based upon that, and that's where our decisions came from.
Yeah, some of those are a result of legislative changes, we dealt with some of those earlier, but not all of those were complete when we began our review of policies in September, because some of those are still being finalized. Or have just been finalized. But yeah, that's what I was saying, accurate description. And it's the policy committee's role to recommend those to the boards for review. And then any comments or questions or changes should be submitted to the policy committee. And then they'll review that and bring their recommendations back to you the next meeting.
And I said, as the newest member of the board, being on this policy review committee has been a tremendous education, because it forces me to go through each and every one of them very systematically. And I would highly recommend that we look at making sure that the newest person on the board has a chance to do that policy process, just because it is a way of forcing that review. And it's, I mean, it's an enormous volume of material. It's a nice way to discipline oneself to read it all.
Okay.
Had you guys completed the first read, the first?
Yeah, I just asked if anybody had any questions, that's where I, when you came back.
Okay. Any further questions about the first reads of policies, or Meredith, anything you wanna highlight on them? Okay. Hearing, no questions, we'll move on to the action items of our agenda, if that's okay? The first one is approval of the minutes. There needs, I seek a motion, I need to make an amendment to the, I believe it was the, uh, December twentieth minutes. There is, under shared services, that I believe I said that the public hearing on the budget will be on January seventh, should be on the fourteenth. Because I had that in my head.
Yeah.
I did, until just now. So I seek a motion to approve the meetings, both public and non-public, from November twenty-ninth, December sixth, December tenth, and December twentieth with amendment to the December twentieth minutes as listed.
Some would.
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Auberg with a second for Ms. McKinnney to approve the minutes with the one amendment. Any more amendments that need to be made? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Approved. Uh, the manifests, Mike, will you take us?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the payroll and accounts payable manifest for December twenty-eighth and January fourth, two thousand eighteen and nineteen respectively, in the total amount of one million five hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars, one million five hundred thirty-nine, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and nine cents.
Second.
We have a motion for Ms. Durknesson to approve the manifest listed in the second from Ms. McKinnney. All those in favor of approval of the manifest, say aye.
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 The next, the next thing we need to address is there's a delegate assembly for the New Hampshire School Board on the twenty-sixth of January. And if possible, I'd like to appoint a delegate to attend that assembly. Is there anyone that would be able to do that? It's gonna be approximately from ten to three. And the, we are going to look at some of the amendments that, or the proposed resolutions that are gonna be addressed that day. We would need to approve those or not, and select, or appoint a delegate to attend the meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry, can't.
January.
Oh.
Saturday.
Just Saturday from ten to three. Anyone?
You are.
Can, is this where we fill in the hours, she's not here?
I don't think that would be fair.
I, I have basketball, I have, I'm coaching on Saturday, so I'm out.
When do we have to give them an answer?
Soon as possible.
Sure, well, you could add this to your agenda on the seventeenth, that's an additional night down if you don't wanna vote on it tonight. But you would have to vote at a meeting to appoint your delegate, and we only have one other scheduled before that.
Right.
I think the School Board Association has been sending this out.
It was out again today.
Yeah.
So should we revisit it on the seventeenth and make a decision at that point? So that night for the workshop, we have some school board search information to look at, as well as the appointment of the delegate for the New Hampshire School Board Association.
We also have a presentation on competency-based education.
Yes, we do. And we might wanna look at depend, we might want to do a six o'clock.
Yeah.
If everyone's available for that, that night, to get our business taken care of before the presentation of seven. Should we just make that decided? So on the seventeenth, we'll meet at six to do the school, to appoint the School Board Association member and go over the document for the superintendent search, and then we'll have the workshop at seven, the competency-based application. Now, the.
To be clear, and tackle the resolutions at that time as well.
Yes, we'll tackle the resolutions at that time. And then that's all, so if you have not reviewed the resolutions, please make sure you do those, do that by that time, we'll do all that in the next meeting. I seek a motion to seek reimbursement of two hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Sorry, skip to the default budget.
Ah, yes, that would be very important, thank you, and I have my glasses on. Lisa?
With the last meeting, we didn't approve the total numbers, but I was also looking at the transportation and just discussing the superintendent and some of my peers. It was actually, the contracted change for special ed is not in, but the addition of the students. So you're covered to have the additional bus, but not the contracted percent change. So I did add another twelve thousand four forty-two to the student transportation line.
Okay.
So, did I say that?
Well, you said additional bus, and I just wanna be clear that this is.
I don't mean bus.
Additional transportation necessitated by individual education plans, not to be confused with the overall.
An additional overall bus.
During budget discussion of an additional bus, it was eliminated from the client.
So, so I didn't follow that, so what is this again?
So this is, we had a question on the transportation, and when I was looking at, or I think I said that includes all transportation, including special ed. And there was a question on, couldn't we add the additional expense for that into the cost? Yes, for the requirement to have whatever additional van, whatever is used for the special ed students' transportation. Yes, but not the cost, the change of the contract cost.
Like the percentage change.
Correct, right. So I had to pull a portion out, but I could add to that twelve thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars, which you'll see under the function twenty-seven hundred, which is student transportation, on page three of five. So the total of the call budget that is proposed is twenty million seven eighty-six, one seventy-eight. And that is the number that I would need your approval to bring to the budget committee.
And Lisa, do you need us to complete the MSDSV at this point?
You can do that after the public hearing, you can sign all the forms. I, you know, there's always the chance that a member might choose to adjust.
We just have to make sure that we sign up to have that.
Maybe we'll just plan to bring it that evening, and we can get that taken care of as.
Yes, I will have the forms there, because the MS form for the budget committee also will need to be signed and posted, posted online also.
So I seek a motion to approve the default budget as listed, in the amount of twenty million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKinnney with a second from Mr. Kinnison to approve the default budget as listed. Any questions about that motion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor of approving the default budget, say aye.
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 It's approved. The next thing is a motion to seek reimbursement from the town for impact fees for school construction project expenses. Meredith, do you wanna say anything about that?
Sure, and Lisa can chime in. Historically, the way that impact fees have been sought in the town have been as a reimbursement. And so we have an invoice for construction work. We would seek reimbursement from the town council for that, but the board needs to vote to seek that reimbursement. Those monies will then go to offset bond costs. Go to that account on expenses, sorry.
I seek a motion to seek reimbursement of two hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars ninety-seven cents of impact fees for school construction project expenses from the New Market Town Council.
Some would.
Second.
We have a motion for Ms. Durknesson with a second for Ms. McKinnney to seek reimbursement of the impact fees. Any questions about that motion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor of seeking reimbursement, say aye.
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 The next thing is approval of donations and acceptance, Meredith already accepted the robotics donation, so thank you to the orthodontics group for that. And we will keep the donations, the happenings of the robotics team as they ask, I'm sure. And then we have a band donation, I'm not sure where that's from, or?
Yep, so we received a donation from a gentleman by the name of Tom Sawyer. He lives out of state, actually, but attended our holiday concert. And a donation to our band program of fifteen hundred dollars.
That's nice.
So we'd seek the board's acceptance of that donation to go to their student activities account.
That's amazing, I seek a motion to accept the generous donation from Mr. Sawyer, fifteen hundred dollars, for the high school band.
Some would.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Auberg with a second from Mr. Kinnison to approve, accept the donation. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer, for that.
Okay, on that, it just came to my mind, if, I know that we have had other generous donations, and, you know, we talked about the sign earlier. We've acknowledged folks here, are we, are we sending letters?
Yes.
We are, okay.
We'll move to the vote of accepting this donation, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you again, Mr. Sawyer, and the concert was excellent. The next thing is second readings of some policies. The policy committee has been diligently working on policy and supervising it, you know. Any questions about these policies we had first read last time?
I had, um.
The, the agenda?
Yeah, the agenda.
E what?
And I forgot to write that on.
DB, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination.
BDB.
Uh, public, there's a public comment strike. And I read this online, so maybe it's been. Public comment.
In the final paragraph? Or the final paragraph speaks to.
Well, I just said, uh, agenda, public comment strike leaves an unfinished sentence. The agenda, is there one on the agenda?
I'm gonna read this is, I'll read this one down, see if that's the one.
No, there's strike lines in it, or there were, in what I was reading online.
We can pull that from the slide if you want, and bring that back at the next meeting, so we can.
It was just a matter of, it looked like it was, like, there were some, there were a couple of places where it, at the right end of the page, or the right side of the page, and the left side of the page, on the adjoining lines, that the slash through had not worked, and just made it an unfinished sentence. My next one was BGE under, um. Paragraph three, all policy manuals to anyone. That's, maybe this was where. All policy manuals to anyone.
So if anyone should be continued to strike out.
Yeah, that may be, that may be what it was. Continue the strikeout all the way through there. And just all policy manuals are subject to recall at any time.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and that was it then.
Any other policy issues for the second?
For the two Elizabeths, I commented earlier about the changes recommended by the School Board Association or versus what the committee may have come up with, I don't know if it's feasible, but if you, if the committee recalls and can point out where we might have deviated and what, what the thinking was. Is that, is it, is it too thorough in these two? Is too much of it to kinda pick through it, or?
I mean, I would say there's been no substances, substantive change to the, like, there's nothing where we've said.
No, it's been strictly what the recommendations were, if we looked at it, we said, this is redundant, we have their copy, our copy, and another one, let's.
BGE is a good example, though. Your, the one we were just looking at around policy dissemination. Your policy manual is no longer a hard copy manual that you give out to everyone. You maintain it online, so it was updated towards less of that. The School Board Association's version still shows it as the hard copy. And we do have one paper copy, because you would do that as good practice. But that, that's a good example of where the committee said, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to say that we're gonna hand out manuals when we don't, we provide it online where everyone can access it.
And part of the discussion at that point was, I had just been doing something on the Dell, and I realized that I was able to backtrack and find something from several months back. As inexperienced as I am with that search, I was still able to find something. So I said, yeah, it makes sense to me, because I'm probably the least experienced in all of this, and I could still find it now. I'm not, I'm not really adept, but I could find it.
I think it's helpful also to be able to look at strikeouts and things to see. I think it's helpful also to be able to look at strikeouts and things to see, you know. And that basically, you know, Meredith was just saying, no one's gonna be in possession. So, you can see where the changes were made and she had articulated why that was made.
The bold additions are things that were added. The legal references sometimes have changed. Um, the strike throughs indicate what was removed. Again, um, I think we walked through the A's and Bs at your, um, November meeting in terms of, um, general changes. But if it's the pleasure of the board to have us walk through each of those in turn at future meetings, we certainly can do that.
I, I don't think, no, I, I, for, for my purposes, I don't think that's necessary. I just, I just, my, my question was more general. It's just that, did you see, I mean, what you just described is an obvious change. We don't have a, we don't have any, we don't hand out paper copies anymore. We, we.
I got one.
We wisely have them on their website, on our website. Uh, but just like, was there anything in, when the committee was reviewing these where you said you looked at the, at the, uh, proposed version of, from the school board administrator and say, hey, boy, we really don't think that's what we wanna do or we wanna tweak that a little bit. We think we, it's better this way. Any of those types of changes?
I mean, like, one, one example would be this, the superintendent evaluation piece. We, there was a policy for it and then there were examples of evaluations. And in our case, maybe we had three. And there were three more from the school board's association. We sort of looked at those six and determined the best ones to put in that give us, gave us a, the most wide ranging option for evaluation for that candidate. And that's how we came to that.
Those are for that, that's the first reading.
Yeah, and that's just something that just came to me right now.
But that's good, cause that's what I was wondering. How did you come to that?
Yeah.
How did you choose that?
And it gave us, it, they were the ones that provided us, would provide future boards with the best ability to evaluate that position. And that's just one example of what happens. Um.
Cause I know, you know, sometimes just in, in my work, like with model rules and sometimes they, you know, may not fit quite so neatly for our, um, district. And, and, but there are obviously a lot of just legal stuff that.
Right.
That we wouldn't tweak. Um, but I, so I gather in, in, in the stuff for the second reading tonight, there is, there's nothing really of substance that's changed, I suppose, from what was recommended by the, um, the, um, model policies from the school board administrators?
Let me see. I mean, there are some that are being struck through as deletions for reasons, um.
Other than just the cleanup, like we talked about, I, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna dwell on that. That's.
No, I mean, that's just, you know, um, and there were sometimes, some situations where we had some redundancies. Where, um.
You have the policy in two places.
Two places, or even in the same policy, we're saying the same thing a couple of different ways within a page.
Mm-hmm.
And you don't need to have that second iteration.
Right.
So.
So more cleanup.
Exactly, exactly.
But nothing in a substantive category that you can.
I mean, nothing, nothing ju- jumps out.
Okay.
Um, and Ingrid, I might be misspeaking, but I don't.
No, not, uh, nothing.
No. Because i- if we were going to make a substance and change, substantive change of policy, that would require the overall board approval. And action on it. So, we can, we don't even have that power to say, here is a whole new generated policy based upon Ingrid and Kim deciding, cause we don't have that ability.
Well, actually, I, I would, what I was thinking is that I'm not worried about that you would, but that you wouldn't. That you, if you took, if you looked at something, boy, this doesn't really make sense. Like, it wasn't a strict legal requirement, but you saw a better way. Um, that, that, that your fresh eyes on it might say, hey, you know, at least bring it to our attention.
And I think that's exactly what happened in the example of the superintendent evaluation.
Yeah.
We are looking at something that could provide us and future boards with better ability to, to provide, to do this jo- that part of the job.
Right.
So, that's a decision we made to add those things in.
Got it.
So.
Okay.
Any other questions about those? Um, I seek a motion to approve the policies listed under second reading with the amendment to BE, BGE to strike out. Um, the two, the, the notes that Ingrid, Ms. Alberg added tonight. Seek a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. McKinney and a second for Ms. Alberg to approve the policies listed, listed under the second read. Um, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Just a couple of things before we go into non-public session. Um, there's going to be a budget committee meeting next, Monday the seventh at seven, we believe, to further, um, review the school budget.
Could be six.
Six or seven to be determined. Um, we will need to, um, hone in on this, the communication piece to have that part ready to, um, share if requested by the budget committee. And then the public hearing for the school budget will be on the fourteenth at seven, so those are two Mondays in a row. And our next, uh, meeting as a board will be the school board workshop. It's on January seventeenth. We've decided that's gonna be at six P M. At six P M, we will review the details front that we discussed in the superintendent search as well as, um, appoint a delegate for the New, New Hampshire School Board Association Assembly and review the proposed resolutions there. And then we will have a presentation on, um, competency-based education. And I seek a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three two C.
So moved.
Kenny. Kinnison. We'll do a roll call vote at seven fifty. Ms. Alberg?
Y- yes.
Mr. Kinnison?
Aye.
Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
It is the.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good night. I was, the one of the policies that reminded me of one of the old days.